Twenty first regular meeting, and I'm already gonna ask for people to mute, because I don't know what that noise is. At 6:30 PM, Webex conferencing system. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council in GCTV-15. If any other person's presence are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Is there anyone else recording? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call of members?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Yusor.
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Vice President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgie?
Here.
President Ricketts?
Here.
Counselor Stempel Ray? I don't see that Counselor Stempel Ray is logged in. I will keep an eye on that to let you know when she logs in. But, Madam President, you do have a forum.
Thank you so much. Okay, so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and again, this is voluntary, okay? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Which stands: One nation. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Make the motion to approve the August 18 City Council minutes?
Seconded, Gwen.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Okay.
President Ricketts, may I ask a question?
Would you like it to be by each council?
Who moved the motion? No, I didn't catch who moved the motion.
Who made the motion?
I moved it, but I was muted. It's Elmer.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to- Whoop, oh.
I have a point of order. I'm still without a agenda. I'm sorry.
Who is speaking?
This is Counselor Hirschfeld.
You're without agenda for tonight's meeting, you mean?
That is correct.
Did you just receive an email from the clerk?
I did, but we did not have an agenda, sorry.
Okay. Give me a minute, Norm. I will get in and I will send you the link to the agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Hirschfeld, can we continue on while she's doing that? Because the next piece is the school committee, all right?
Yes, please, sorry.
Thank you. So at this ti- oh, you know what? I don't think I did this. Was it unanimous for the minutes of August 18?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, it was.
All right. At this time, I want to turn the floor over to the Superintendent Schools and School Committee President.
Welcome. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm only the chair. I don't want to be the president. President Ricketts and all the councilors, happy fall, officially fall today.
I know.
We started the new academic year on September 7, the day after, no, that's not true. The week before that, whenever that was. GCC was September 7. You can understand why I'm confused. And our new superintendent, who's with us tonight, Christine DeBarge, started on August 23. That date I will remember forever. It was a huge date for us. We're so happy to have her with us. I also noted another date. It was September 14 was the day I stopped texting her every day to make sure she was going to come back on the next one. She's still here with us. So we have just a few agenda item things we talked about ahead of time that we figured you would want to get updates on. And then, of course, when Christine is done, we will take any questions that you have. I did want to just make a quick note before I turn it over to the superintendent about fall sports, only because it's generally a thing that the school committee kind of approves. There's not much to report, other than we have the co-op football team. We have our other fall sports. Everything is on a normal schedule this year compared to the alternate of the COVID schedule last year. And I understand the football team is doing rather well this year, although I do not follow American football, as many of you know. And they are following all the COVID protocols, and everyone is happy to be participating again in sports in what is a somewhat normal schedule. And at this point, I will turn it over to Superintendent DeBarge, who I will be told, I'm sure, prefers to be called Christine as soon as she begins talking. I would never do that to you in a public meeting, but I do prefer to go by my first name or Dr. DeBarge, if you feel the need to be formal, but please don't. I am extremely pleased to be in Greenfield and was very excited to be offered the position. And as I told Amy, she's fine to not check. I will come back every day unless I tell her otherwise, but that's not going to be anytime in the near future. Everybody's been wonderful. Staff and the students I've been able to meet to this point have been extremely welcoming. I've been able to start meeting some other department heads, and they've been very welcome, welcoming. So nothing but a fabulous experience to this point in Greenfield, so I'm thrilled to be here. Few highlights from our year so far, as Amy referenced. We started on September 1, and you know, we have a nice full house, which is great. And certainly, some adjustment issues that I think we all anticipated happening, but in general, I think it's the same for our students as for our athletes. They're happy to be in school, happy to be with their friends and meeting their teachers for the new year. And we always have adjustment issues with our new students, our kindergarten, you know, kindergartners coming in. But overall, it's really a positive experience. We have, we anticipate starting our pool testing for the schools, starting at our elementary level next week. We had a slight delay in that because we had signed up to access the resources that the Department of Education offered for us. And unfortunately, DUCI had communicated that they, the vendor that they use, had some staffing issues, so they have not yet started offering the resources. So Kelly, our head nurse, and I talked about the option of using our staff. So we're going to start, or we believe we'll be starting next week by the elementary, and then following, adding additional schools on in the following weeks. So we're very pleased about that. However, we have been doing the other two types of COVID testing since school started. One of them is a rapid test for any student who comes in and is not feeling well. Our nursing staff is able to do a rapid test right away and report those results to the family and obviously respond accordingly. And the other piece is the test and stay option. So if a student is a close contact through school, we are able to do testing. And if that testing is negative and the student is not showing any signs of COVID-19, they are able to stay in school. Which, the positive of that is we do not have students missing school waiting to see if they will start to not feel well. So I am reporting cases out to the school community weekly in the aggregate. So any parent updates that go out include the count of COVID-positive cases in the district for staff and students combined. Amy took care of our fall sports update. Unfortunately, we are experiencing, like everybody else, I think, some staffing shortage issues. We have a number of unfilled positions that we continue to advertise, but that certainly, you know, is a situation we're trying to resolve quickly. We've also had some change in our administrators. And our most recent change is that Casey Putnam, the principal at Four Corners Discovery School, will be leaving us right before Columbus Day. So the school committee and I have a meeting tomorrow night to discuss the next steps in that process. But the administrators have been extremely welcoming and collaborative in working with me, so I'm sure that whoever comes in to take Casey's position will add to that. We also have a new associate principal, starting at the middle school on Monday. So he is an experienced administrator coming to us, and we're very excited about that. We were able to sign a contract with our custodial union, so that was a successful endeavor. John Robert, a retired superintendent from Hatfield, facilitated that work for us because of the superintendent's transition during that time and did a great job on behalf of the district. And school committee voted on that agreement at the last meeting. We still have some other collective bargaining issues in process, but that one is now off the table, we're happy to say. I think that's kind of the highlights, I think, for the first few weeks of school. Certainly, there may be things that you folks are interested in that I didn't consider on the list, so happy to take any questions you may have. And then, as we get to know each other better, I'll do a better job anticipating what you might like for me to share.
Okay, thank you so much. And before I call on any of the council, I would just like to say on behalf of my colleagues, welcome to Greenfield, welcome to the district.
Thank you.
Sounds like you hit the ground running. And just by going on social media and seeing parents posting pics of the first couple days and stuff, everything has been so positive and great. I know there are parents who are very excited about field hockey coming to even younger grades than high school. So-
Good.
It seems so upbeat, so welcome and thank you for all that you do. And I'm going to let Counselor Elmer, Counselor Stempel Ray, and Counselor Mayo speak next.
Hi, thank you for taking the question. I just wanted to get a sense of the size of things. What the size of the graduating class will be this year, or the entering senior class?
I actually don't know that off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get that confirmed and get back to you.
Thank you.
It's typically, just in a general sense, right now, I believe the classes are around 90. It might be slightly smaller than that. And I'm generalizing, and then there is a, the folks who are in the 9th and 10th grades are larger classes, like closer to 100 students. But we can get you exact numbers.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Stempel Ray, and then Counselor Mayo.
Thank you. I wanted to just say welcome. And to echo President Ricketts' statement, it sounds like you have absolutely hit the ground running. You haven't been working here for a year? I also wanted to echo President Ricketts again, go field hockey, a little biased. And as somebody who has a new student in the school system, I just want to thank the school committee and everything you all are doing for what has been received as a very warm welcome back into the district. My bonus daughter is, has started 8th grade and loves it. She absolutely loves the district, and she's having a great time there. My question for you, and this has been a reoccurring theme, and maybe it's not a question as much as, like, how can we work together to solve this? It's a common theme with parents, and some will complain more than others about it. What are we doing to fix GPS and parent communication? There seems to be a breakdown in lack of consistencies, where, whether we're communicating snow days or we're communicating materials for the first day of school. Parents just don't know where to go. It might be as simple as creating behaviors of where to find things. But I'm curious to hear if that's something you thought about, how we can support you in this. So it's an open question. I know that you're newer to the role, but I'm curious if you have any thoughts.
I do have thoughts, and when I went through the interview process, one of the very clear and consistent areas of need was communication. So I've been thinking about that, actually, from my first interview. So one of the things I have started doing and will continue to do is send out a weekly parent update every Thursday evening. It goes out to all parents who are registered in our school messenger system, which should be everybody, because that's how they hear about snow days, so. And I am communicating weekly, I am communicating about all of the COVID information. So any COVID updates, any protocol changes in that regard will come from me. Any other high-level district decisions will also be communicated by me. The other piece in terms of having some consistencies, that's something I am focusing on with the administrators, just to have as simple of discussions as what day are we communicating this to families? What's going on the website? What's going in your newsletters? And I think that type of coordination will help with what you're describing. We also have a communications plan that was done prior to me arriving that I am reviewing and will be reviewing with the administrators and the school committee to further the communication efforts. But it's a priority for me, and I know that the communication will improve as I go. I'm very happy to say tomorrow will be a month that I've been here, but I did start the parent updates my first week of employment and will continue those.
Thank you. Forgot I was muted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Counselor Mayo.
Thank you. Hi, Christine, and welcome to Greenfield.
Thank you.
I am interested in, I'm happy to hear that there was a recent contract negotiation ended. I forgot who you said that was with the-
Our custodians.
Can you tell me what the contract was settled for? The years that they got their-
It was 2020 to 2022, I think. 23? 23, yeah. I thought it was one year retro, two years forward. That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Two years, two years for each of the last years, or?
You mean 2%? What do you mean?
No, 2% for the last remaining years each? Because you said it was a three-year, a three-year contract?
We can send you the details. It is a three-year. I don't remember the percentages, Christine. I don't, off the top of my head. We've been in an unfortunate- Yeah, it's fine. We've been in an unfortunate situation where we're negotiating about a half dozen union contracts all at the same time. I honestly can't keep the percentages straight, but we can get-
If you could send me that, that'd be, that'd be great.
Sure, no problem.
Just, just the numbers is fine.
Yeah, no problem. We can do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you again, and we will see you, as you know. Counselor Forgie and myself meet with you in the school committee, and we'll be seeing you again soon. And so for all other councilors, if you ever want to reach out to Counselor Forgie or myself, we do meet with the superintendent, the mayor, and school committee chair once a month. And so we can help, you know, bridge that gap as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Sorry about my dog barking. She saves her loudest barks for my meetings. We'll see you all soon, all right?
All right, bye-bye. Thank you so much. Okay. Okay. Next, we have communication from the mayor, city officers, and employees. Mayor Whedon Garter?
Sure. Good evening, folks, again. And I actually don't have that much information for you tonight, much to tell you about. But I do have one really wonderful piece of news. Some of you may have heard it if you're on social media from about, I'd say, 1 o'clock this afternoon on. The city of Greenfield, yesterday, accepted the $400,000 park grant for the skate park. At long last. So many times we have applied for that grant and not gotten it, so this was our time. Susan Wargaffdick, a consummate skate park supporter and member of the skate park committee, was able to go to Lowell and accept it. And I don't know, I think the recorder will be putting something in the paper tomorrow, but she was able to actually accept it from the governor, and there's actually photographic evidence of that. So a big shout-out to Kristi Moore for being persistent and for the skate park parents and skate park committee for making this happen, allowing this to happen and go forward, and being totally committed from here on out. So very, very, very excited about that. It's a great thing for the kids in Greenfield.
It's great news.
And we can now, with the generous vote of the council for the $300,000 back in capital meetings, we can begin to plan the skate park. I think we need some more money, and they've committed themselves to fundraising. I think we need some more money. So we're going to be out there still having events and raising money for the skate park. I, in the interest of time, in the sense of your time in particular, for your, to get through your agenda, but also Director of Community and Economic Development, M.J. Adams, I'm happy to, as they say, yield the balance of my time to her and her presentation, if you wish.
So, Mayor, before you turn that over to M.J., I would just like to just take a moment, on behalf of all of my colleagues on council, I just want to thank you for all your work that you've been doing on the fire station. Thanks to Counselor Jarvis, who keeps us up to date with very detailed minutes. We know what's been going on. And it was a happy day, you know, because they are moving. At the same time, it was sad when they did their last tone. So thank you for your part in it and keeping that all going. I'd like to reach out to also thank Fernando for IT, for the work that they've been doing, and Counselor Warner for not only all the main water main breaks, but also their help in getting this temporary fire station up and running. I also want to say that we got the email about Kim in the assessor's office. So on behalf of all of us on council, we just want to wish her well for the future. And I just want to say that I like the communication that's been going on between the mayor's office and myself, so then I can turn around and then, you know, be speaking with my councilors. So thank you so much, and I just wanted to make sure that I reached out to you about your different department heads, so, you know, you can help share some of those thoughts. And M.J., you have the floor.
I'm happy. Well, if you, if I may preempt for just one second, Madam President. Thank you so much for that, and yes, it was a true, true effort. Combined and collaborative effort between the firefighters and the city of Greenfield to get the temporary station up and running on time, and they did a great job. Marlo is calculating for us the amount of money that was saved by the amount of work that the DPW and central maintenance did over there. It will be pretty impressive. And it's every dollar that wasn't spent on outside contractors, but that work got done is a dollar saved for the fire station.
Thank you so much. M.J.?
I'm on.
Yes, and then I will circle back after your presentation, unless- Counselor Wheeler and Counselor Stempel Ray, did you have something for the mayor, or is it for M.J.?
Yeah, it was, it was for the mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Wheeler.
Okay, thanks. I actually have multiple items. But hopefully, they'll be quick. I also wanted to, wanted to recognize and thank Kimberly Mu for her service to the city as chief assessor. I, it was my pleasure to work with her when I chaired Ways and Means. And I wish her all the best for the city of Amherst. I also have to recognize that I do feel she was somewhat hounded out by the city council. And that I really think it's upon us, the city council, to create a work environment in which department heads can do their job. And I hope that going forward, we as councilors can do that. And the other piece, which might need to come later, but I know that Jean Canteen, the president of the Greenfield Public Library Foundation, was hoping to make an announcement, and I was asked to kind of help facilitate that. So if Jean is present, I don't know, she might be a phone call, I was wondering-
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
We can. So, President Ricketts, I was wondering if after M.J.'s presentation, would you recognize Jean as president of the foundation?
Okay, yes, I will. Thank you so much, Counselor Wheeler, and I, please just jump in if I forget. Okay. Counselor Stempel Ray, and then M.J., I promise you're there. Okay.
I won't be long either. It's, I too wanted to recognize Kimberly Mu. And Counselor Wheeler said exactly what I was going to say, but I just feel it's necessary to say it. It's not open season on department heads. And I'm speaking very clearly to the council. Our actions, I'm, I'm going to include myself in the group because the group is what caused this, even though I'm in full support of Kim, and I feel like I came, came up on the council with her because we grew alongside each other, starting in 2015. There's consequences to the things that we do. There's consequence. I know that we get emails and we get pressured from the community to look into things, and that's our job. and that's our job, but it's also not our job to be bullies. And I emailed Kim today to congratulate her. How lucky is the city, or I guess it's the town of Amherst, to have her? But the joke is on us because we developed her here. We paid for her certifications. And then what did we do? We chewed her up and we spit her out. So really, like, hang your heads low because this is a direct result of that, and.
Excuse me, President Ricketts?
Yep, yes, I was going to say, this is so admirable.
This is a personnel matter, and I believe that we need to go into executive session if we're going to talk about personnel. And in this.
I will, I will.
And both of them know, yes, and both of them know better.
I'm actually not talking about.
It is not excusable. We need to go into executive session if we're going to talk about personnel.
Exactly.
Well, regardless, our behavior.
We go into executive session.
Okay, and I prefer not to, so.
Then I'll just drop it. I'm, I'm actually not speaking about a personnel issue anymore. A specific, I mean, I can speak about our behavior, but I'm not talking to a specific person anymore.
Um, Madam Clerk? Are you just raising your hand? And I can't hear you, though, if you're talking. Yes, I can hear you now. Yes.
Okay. So just to address a few things, the executive session law, if the council is choosing to go into executive session, I would recommend against that. The executive session law that may allow the council to go into executive session requires that individuals to be discussed in such an executive session be notified in writing by the public body at least 48 hours prior to the proposed executive session. Provided, however, that notification may be waived at an agreement of the party. I'm not debating whether you are discussing the reputation, character, or physical conditions, or mental health, or professional competence. I'm simply letting you know, the executive session law, the council has not given notice to anyone who you may discuss in executive session. Therefore, I would advise not to go into executive session.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, if no other councilors have anything to say, M.J. Adams, would you like to give us a brief overview so we can then move on?
Certainly. Happy to do that. M.J. Adams, Director. Director of Community and Economic Development. I'm here just tonight to do a very short presentation. I'm hoping that all of you had the opportunity to see the report and to participate in the August 31 presentation of the findings and the recommendations from the report, from our consultant Peg Behringer and Ted Brovich. If you haven't had the opportunity to do that, I want to share with you that it is on the website. You can go to Community and Economic Development, our webpage, and view both the recording and also see the record in its entirety there. My goal tonight was just to give you a brief update on what it is and what it means. Greenfield was invited to be, to participate in the local rapid recovery program that was set up by the state as a response to help communities figure out how to breathe life back into their downtowns, given the pandemic that we've endured the last 18 months. We were one of 125 communities across the Commonwealth, and we participated with consultants assigned from DHCD. That was Peg Behringer from Fine Point, who also worked with us in the previous year to do our business survey, and also has worked with us a little on evaluating the feasibility alternatives for the First National Bank building. So we were fortunate in that she was very familiar with the community, had already, we'd already done some preliminary work to get ourselves set to do this local rapid recovery planning process. And out of that, we were able to accomplish the work and publish the initial report at the end of August. Penny, am I able, Chairwoman, am I able to share my screen?
Yep, if you know, yep, if you know how, then go, go for it.
Yep. Okay, I will give it a shot.
Okay.
And what I'm trying to show you is the key findings. And, let's see.
So, M.J., if you are not able, there you go, never mind.
I'm sharing WebEx right now, right? There we go.
You are.
I'm much more versed at Zoom than I am in WebEx, I must admit. Anyways, the, these were the diagnostic key findings. We did a presentation of these out to the community back in the end of May. I'm not going to go through them in detail because there's really some pretty terrific written material and a much more thorough presentation of this from the consultants. But the essence is we looked at four different areas: the physical environment, the business environment, our customer base for the downtown, and also looked at the administrative capacity of organizations that were serving the downtown. And you can see that there were a lot of pluses, that a lot of positive things that were identified about our downtown, but we also have some weaknesses and some challenges that we need to address. After we did the, the key findings presentation, there was a more involved conversation with an ad hoc advisory committee that involved, that included a number of people from the business community, the civic organizations. We had some city councilors who were involved in that. Downtown Neighborhood Association had a representative on the, the ad hoc committee. And the consultant did some more in-depth interviews with some of the key business holders and stakeholders in the downtown area. Out of that came a series of recommendations that really looked across a couple of realms: the public realm, the private realm, taking a look at our revenues and sales that were happening in our downtown, again, the administrative capacity, and then also taking a look at the mix of tenants that were occupying our downtown. And out of that came a series of these 12 recommendations that, that we have the opportunity to really identify which are really priorities for us and which we want to spend some time and energy on. I'll just give you an update on some of them. We always, we, we said that this was like building the, the plane as you were flying it because inevitably, when you're in a planning process and you're in an environment where you're trying to make things better and do good things, things happen while you're in the planning process. So I just wanted to give you an update on some of the things that you've, that, that are connected to the recommendations that you see here. First of all, one of the recommendations was to take a look at our sign and facade program, which we've been running, which we've run intermittently over the last 10 years with Community Development Block Grant. We know that that is a little bit of a difficult program to negotiate, and we're trying to look for models to make it work better. Specifically, it's one thing when the property owner owns the building and wants to make the improvements to the storefront. It's more challenging when the tenant who's coming in wants to make those improvements, and that, that just the structure of the program is a little challenging. So we're actually researching, is there a better way, an easier way, to make that program, to provide those resources, to make that happen, so that it's not burdensome and, and doesn't get used as robustly as we'd like to see it happen. The other point that's already moving along is I've got to give credit to Director Torre, the planning director, who hopped right on taking a look at the sign and, the sign issues identified by one of our consultants, who said, you know, take a look at the signage and the sign regulations downtown. They might be making it a little challenging, and I spoke with Eric last week, and I know that he and the, the planning board are looking at the, the sign regulations to do something about that. And I'm saying that because one of the things that we're doing is there's 12 recommendations, and you might know that tomorrow evening I'm doing the public forum that invites additional community input. And so in that format, I'm doing some work that only limits, we only have, we can only deal with 10 options. So I wanted you to know what, why the signs and why the storefronts weren't on the options that we're going to talk about tomorrow night if you're participating in that. The other things that have happened, as you saw, you might have seen today that we did a ribbon cutting over a Fisk, Fisk Ave, because Carol Collins worked with a bunch of volunteers to really do some wonderful stuff around the Pollinator Garden that they created back at the tail end, the back end of the Fisk parking lot, near the Main Street end of Fisk, the Fisk area, the Fisk lot area. There was new benches, the B got reinstalled, the bent, there's a chessboard, there's a, there's a bike repair facility, there's new benches. It was, it was a great little piece that Carol Collins was able to get a lot of movement with, with, with an AARP grant. And I'll share with you that because of the, the work and the community involvement in that, we were successful in getting another grant from the Mass Department of Transportation to really implement the plan that had been developed maybe about six or seven years ago with Conway School of Landscape Design, where we actually looked to make the Fisk area, the Fisk parking lot, a pocket park, and flip the parking so that it's a Long Mile Street, but make that a much more attractive area and an active area, an active place where people can have a little green space in the downtown. So, that is happening. I'll also share that those are grants that we've already received in terms of the Mass DOT funds for the Fisk Ave. And we've already submitted two applications for some additional activity in these recommendations. Those are, we've asked Mass Development to give us some technical assistance as we think about the next step. We're trying to, to get the First National Bank redeveloped. And the second piece is we've asked DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, to see if we might get some funding under the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative to take a look at the streetscape improvements that we might want to make as we talk about redoing, or making those Main Street improvements that the mayor and Marlo have been talking about under the Transportation Improvement Program, if I got that right. So there's a lot of things that are already in the works, but there's also things that we might have some opportunities to do a little thing, to, to do some additional things in the short term. We're actually talking with the Economic Development Council of Western Massachusetts, who's had some money, who are having some money made available to them from the state to take a look at some of the other items that we have on our list and to advance those forward. We've been talking about the marketing initiative that the city is trying to do, the business directory and kiosks. And also, you know, and I, I won't skirt away from Court Square, you know. Clearly, we, we've got a lot of conversations going on about Court Square. I'm, I'm, well, our plan is to keep it in place until early November, and then to sort of sit and do a, a debrief, like, what do we like, what do we not like? As we think about transitioning this to a pedestrian plaza or dual use, how do we share this space a little more? I'm sorry?
Nothing. Sorry, it was me.
And where we're going to go with that, I will share with you that we're going to look for some design funds to really help us move to the next stages, if that's what we decide we want to do. And like I said, we will be visiting that in early November, and we'll move forward and make decisions as a community how we want to advance that. I did share with you, you know, we had put out and requested comment and feedback from folks. I'll share with you that the, the heaviest load we got back in terms of comments is around Court Square. We'll continue to accept feedback and comment and input from, on the Court Square issue, and we'll sit down at the table in November to really sort through it and see where, how we want to proceed on that. So that's it in a nutshell. Like I said, we're sort of moving through this process. The, the issues that we're looking at are really, what can we do in the short term to really support our downtown for coming back to life in the way that it, it can be, the way it was? We do know that prior to COVID, we were getting staged to do an update of our downtown revitalization plan. We'll be moving on to track with that later this fall. But clearly, this was an opportunity for us to explore, test things out, be curious, try some, try some things, learn some things. And like I said, we're looking to continue the feedback and comment, and then we'll sit down and sort through all of that a little later this fall as we sort of wrap things up and figure out what additional funding or what additional priorities we'd like to be focused on. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, great. Counselor Gwen, and then I'll say something, and you could take your screen down now. I just need to see some people. Thank you. Counselor Gwen?
Thanks, M.J., for that update and report. I appreciate it. I know this is kind of out of your realm, but has there been any information coming in for any of the empty properties in downtown being reopened or reutilized? I know we have some pretty major properties that have gone stagnant during the COVID, you know, days. Have we been hearing from outside businesses looking to come and utilize any of those properties? Anything new in the works?
Well, we do know that, you know, there's some, there's some preliminary activity starting to happen with Wilsons. To me, that's the, that's, that's the big enchilada in downtown, quite honestly. I think we all need to be very focused and aware of what's going to happen to that building and how it contributes to the downtown. So, so there has been some activity and discussion about Wilsons. There, there have been some occasional requests for information about possible storefronts or availability. I actually keep a very informal sheet or binder in my office to sort of guide people towards properties that I'm aware that might have some opportunity to be available. We do, you know, I, I hear that sort of under the radar, and I provide as much information as I can. We do know that we've got some cannabis concerns that are looking to appear and be part of our downtown more significantly. And I'm aware of some of the property owners who are all ears when there might be an opportunity that they want to be included in any sort of conversation about that. So, that's about as specific as I can get. That said, I, I know that the Armory is actually in our downtown area, and I know that there's been some, you know, that's been, been moving forward in terms of becoming surplus. Did I answer your question? So, I was talking to the ground. We're happy to help anybody who has some interest. What I have heard is, is I have had some calls about some industrial and manufacturing operations looking for some bigger space that we don't have available at the moment, but we are hopeful that over the course of time, we'll be able to make some progress with our I-91 industrial park expansion. I think we're still in the very early stages of that.
No, thank you for that. I, you know, I'm seeing things that, that look like they're filling up again. I hear some good things out there. I, I see some reuses of some properties that have, have been shuttered for a little period of time. So it's really good to know that, that energy is starting to reappear. And, you know, anything that we can do is always helpful to do that, but I appreciate that. And I know there were people getting concerned, but, you know, I see a lot of places, you know, starting to turn over and be looked at, and I just wanted to reiterate that with you, and, and I love the information on the Wilsons Building, so thank you very much.
Yeah. I, I will say there's a brand new tea shop on Mile Street. You should check it out.
Yes. Okay, and I, I just want to thank you too for your work and everything. I know I've been popping in like an ADC meeting or, you know, places that you're speaking, and I see a number of our councilors who really do care about what's going on in Greenfield. They've been showing up to those meetings. They come to the meetings, they participate. They have been the ones who have been engaged, and so I just want to thank you for that. And I know, on behalf of the councilors who do attend the meetings and stuff, we do thank you and stuff. So I just want you to know that we have your back all the time, you know. And so we're supportive of each other because, like I say, we keep showing up to the meetings and we keep being part and participating. So thank you so much for your part as well.
Well, thank you, and if you don't get enough meetings, you're welcome to join in on the public forum tomorrow afternoon at 5 o'clock. Like I said, we, we, we've continued to welcome input, and, and you've seen that we've gotten a lot of written commentary on the. And so now we need to sort through and, and do our homework and figure out where to put our shoulders to the wheel on, so thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so, Counselor Stempel Ray, then Counselor Gilmore, and then I'll go to public comment.
I just wanted to thank Director Adams for her work in keeping. We always hear about like, there's no business, the businesses are empty. Like, I want to thank your efforts for the last 18 months for keeping our business afloat and supporting those that are here. It brought tears to my eyes today when the bakery put that sign out, open, the flag opened. It was so nice to see Brian open his doors again. We did what we could. He has a really smart business model, so he has to take some credit for it by, by selling the bread to businesses, not just customers. But thank you, MJ, for all the tireless work you've been putting in to support the businesses and make sure that they survive this. And I have to, same thing, like welcome the new businesses that are coming in and thriving during a pandemic. Greenfield is open for business. We've always been open for business. I saw in Positively Greenfield today aromatic, how they took over the Riddell Street property and they are just doing such a great job. I think what happens is that people forget, folks forget that business is more than just retail. And retail is what we can see, but manufacturing is at the root of the history of Greenfield's success. And so thank you for everything that you're doing and, and also kudos to those businesses for pivoting their business models. And we have to, we have to like look beyond, I guess, the naked eye because what's thriving and, and keeping Greenfield vibrant, sometimes you just can't see it. And so I just wanted to reiterate the fact also that the south end of Main Street is full and those businesses are doing well. And, you know, y'all are sick of being home, you're vaccinated, come to Greenfield because shops are open Saturday mornings. You have the farmer's market, which is outside. I could go on and on with all of the great things that you're doing, MJ. And I've been so proud to grow alongside you since my early days in public service, starting with the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee and how much I've learned from you. So thank you and keep up the great work.
Counselor, Counselor Gilmore.
Yes, I was just curious because I know that we and also other, you know, municipalities have done surveys on economic development. And since we're coming out of the pandemic, I'm wondering if you've noticed any kind of shift in priorities. I know that, you know, workers are sort of reimagining their work. I wonder if businesses are also reimagining their business models and if you've seen anything like that.
Well, I've got to say that we're, we're fortunate in that we work with the Franklin County CDC and we were able to work very closely with a number of small businesses, not just in Greenfield, but across the region. And so we really rely on the technical expertise that the CDC has and work with the small businesses. I think that the most important thing for us was to try to get resources to the businesses that were usable and not difficult to access. And in terms of them pivoting, you know, we saw a lot of businesses that went to the, you know, the restaurants that did curbside and takeout. You know, some of them have struggled to sort of restaff up and are making some pretty strategic decisions about when they're open and how they're open. So I think that the most important thing that we can do as a community is really tell them and, and appreciate them by taking our dollars and spending them as much as we can in their shops. We have seen incidentally, I think it's just anecdotal in terms of more people working remotely and, you know, we've had some discussions about what, what's going on with the housing market in Greenfield. I think that's really interesting. I don't think anyone's sure on how that's going to play itself out for the long term, but I think that Greenfield is extremely well positioned to take advantage both of what we had and what we were starting to feel with our, our downtown really becoming a retail and entertainment district, you know, having those, those critical services, you know, we've got a new library, you know, we've got the YMCA, we've got all sorts of amenities in the downtown. And really looking at this small town feel that is really attractive to people who might have been in a more urban setting, but wanting to feel like in a, a more rural setting or not as urban setting, but still have the amenities of being in a rural or an urban environment, but also the amenities of, of being in, in close to, close to nature. And I think we've got the best of both worlds in Greenfield and our challenge is really to figure out how to, how to capitalize on that, how to say we've got it, identify it and let people know about it. So that's, that's, and there, and there's, there's a lot of positive. We've got a couple, you know, things that we got to tackle, but I feel like we're a good team and we can do that. And what I'm really doing is looking forward and I keep on saying to myself, my goodness, what is our Main Street going to look like in five years? We're going to have a new library on one end, new fire station on the other end. Now we know we're going to have a skate park here. You know, what's this downtown going to feel like in five years? And how can we play into it so that people who are here can enjoy it and still feel like it's theirs and yet welcome new, new young blood, new, new blood, I won't necessarily say young, but new blood into the community.
Right. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for your questions and comments, Counselor Gilmore, Counselor Gwynn. Counselor Hirschfeld, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I missed your comment about Wilsons. So if you could repeat it, I, I would really appreciate it.
The only thing I can really say publicly is, is that there's some activity. You know, it's, it's privately owned and, and clearly the owner is trying to figure out what it's, what its next life will look like. And so I know there's been some active conversations with some interested parties. So is that vague enough for you?
Yes.
I guess that will, will have to do, but I will also want to thank you for all the hard work you've done for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Counselor Hirschfeld. Okay, at this time, Jean Cantin, are you still here with us? And thank you again, MJ.
Yes, I am. And thank you so much for having me. I'm just really sorry I can't be there in person because it's such an exciting time. I would very much like, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I would much have preferred to be in person to present a check for $500,000 to the mayor. I haven't figured out how to teleport it to you, so we will present it in person tomorrow morning. I would just like to share a letter, which we will give to the mayor with the check.
Okay.
On behalf of more than 400 citizens of Greenfield, Franklin County and other locations throughout the United States, who have given funds to help build the new library, I am pleased to present you with a check for $500,000. The Board of Directors of the Greenfield Public Library Foundation asks that this money be used by the city to lessen the tax burden for the citizens of Greenfield who voted overwhelmingly to build a new library. We also want to acknowledge and thank you and your staff, the members of the City Council and the dedicated volunteers who worked together to bring this project to the point of groundbreaking and starting to build. The many hours dedicated to this project by the Library Building Committee should also be noted. We have not yet achieved the full $2 million goal, but we currently have pledges of $1,875,000 as we enter the final phase of our fundraising effort. We sincerely hope that the presentation of this check will spur others to join the ranks of those who have pledged money towards this project and help us complete this extraordinary project for Greenfield and its citizens. We're very excited and I'm sure you are, all are too.
We are. Thank you very much.
Madam President, Madam President, if I may speak to Ms. Cantin and all the members of the foundation and all of the wonderful people that have contributed to the foundation. I'll take people's money anytime they want to give it to me, in person or otherwise. Thank you very much. That is a, a really great thing to hear and I am sure that it will actually significantly benefit the people and the taxpayers of Greenfield. So greatly appreciated and I'll see you tomorrow morning, I guess.
You will indeed. I'll take any questions that you have, otherwise thank you for your time and attention.
Okay. Are there any questions from council at this time? Okay, seeing none in the chat, I'd like to open public comment. And the first person that I have is Sandy Thomas, if you can give your name and address, please.
Sure. Thank you, Penny. Sandy Thomas, and I'm at 38 Orchard Street in Greenfield. So thanks for the opportunity to provide input on the recommendations by consultants to revitalize downtown Greenfield. In reading through the recommendations, as reported in the recorder, I was hoping for inspiration or new and exciting suggestions, but I found many of them appeared to be recycled from former master plans and ideas that have been circulating for the 30-plus years that I've been sitting on volunteer committees. As I've shared before, I am not in favor of pedestrian plaza at Court Square. It has been very helpful to have this testing period to see how the reconfigured space would function. I have driven by many different times, mornings, afternoons and evenings. Throughout the time, it's been blocked off, but rarely if ever have I witnessed lots of people sitting at tables and chairs. I do see many of the same people frequenting the Adirondack Chairs in the Common. There simply isn't enough activity to draw more foot traffic to, to do what? The goal, if the goal was to bring people there, there has to be a steady drumbeat of something engaging and exciting to do, and there really just isn't. Someone mentioned this idea has been showing up in many master plans over the years, but it hasn't been done. In my opinion, that's because closing this area does not improve the space at all. It only makes it harder to navigate downtown with no real benefit. As we've successfully done for some time, closing off Court Square temporarily for farmer's markets, dinners or other short-term activities, and then leave it open for the normal flow of traffic at other times is a win-win. The exception to this was when the GBA organized an event for 12 years called Classic Days in Greenfield. I chaired this event for 12 years and will share with you, it was very difficult to hold a day-long community activity with music and speakers as the noise level of traffic, motorcycles and sirens created a very hard to manage event. And the worry of kids running into traffic was always present. This experience resulted in a key recommendation to the 1992 master plan, which called for a community park, safe for all, a stage for music and centrally located downtown. That vision became the Greenfield Energy Park. As of 2011, over $1.2 million was invested in grants and volunteer labor at this formerly blighted site. 22 years, 22 years later, it would benefit greatly from increased attention, cleanup, staffing and program. That would be a great use of funds downtown. Highland Park, not actually in our downtown, but a few blocks from it, was a vital area when we moved to town. Just 15 years ago, people of all ages enjoyed skating there with hockey tournaments and winter carnivals. That gorgeous park could be revitalized for residents and to draw visitors here once again. Another area I could see to devote funds would be to our aging infrastructure. The DPW has had to repair several breaking water pipes in record time this summer, a situation that will not, however, improve without planned maintenance. So these are just a few of my additional ideas for how to revitalize the community. There are good places and many good reasons to invest in Greenfield. Thank you for working to our, improve our community and for the chance to weigh in.
Thank you so much, Sandy. I appreciate that. Okay, next I have Doug Clark. Could you have your name and address, please? Doug, are you still with us?
I see that someone has logged in under Doug and Amy, but they are currently muted. Let me see if I can, I sent them a request.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, thank you.
So sorry for that delay.
No problem.
And thank you for all the work all of you are doing on behalf of the town. I, I just want to speak in the same vein as Sandy Thomas did as a member of the Church Council at Second Congregational Church. For 200 years, long before there was a Town Hall on Court Square, Second Congregational Church has been the downtown church on the Common, actively supporting the hungry, the homeless, those searching for spiritual renewal, the recently incarcerated and many others in our community. It now feels as though we are the church closed off from the Common. With unattractive Jersey barriers at the end of Court Square and a very tight corner to turn from Bank Road to get to the church, many folks have totally missed the confusing turn on their try. And from the scrapes on the concrete wall at the end of the Common, we presume others have not made the turn without mishap. Second Church has remained closed for Sunday worship due to COVID concerns for now, so we have not yet fully experienced the Sunday morning experience of 60 to 90 people arriving for worship. At the time of our previous letter to the mayor, we expressed concerns about the loss of two handicap parking spots close to the front door of our church. Those are gone, as well as several regular parking spaces upon which our elderly members rely. Those concerns are doubled on weekdays when the entire parking lot behind the church is available by permit only and not to the folks, many of whom are seniors, coming to our building for prayer groups, funerals, meetings, community meals, Big Brother, Big Sister, Franklin County activities and other events at the church. We fully support the closure of Court Square for individual events as the city already does for the farmer's market. And since you already have a permitting process in place for use of the space, we propose you make the barriers movable like the planners so that the space could be closed off when events occur and the barriers could be moved when there are no events. It seems unlikely you will have requests for events during winter months. And snow removal in the closed-off area certainly would be a challenge. In addition, the tight corner at the bottom of the Common will be hazardous in winter in addition to being challenging for snow removal. It's hard for us to understand, for some of us to understand which businesses you are providing improved walking access to by closing Court Square permanently. Magpie and Ox and Reed are open only on weekends, on evenings. Village Pizza already has a pocket park right across the street and access to our church and McCarthy Funeral Home, not to mention City Hall itself is more difficult. Rather, we propose it would be more effective to create welcoming spaces with bump outs along Main and Federal Street in direct support and proximate support of our small businesses and restaurants. We share your desire for an attractive welcoming downtown. We believe that a thriving and easily accessible church on the Common is a benefit to any community and urge you to reconsider the proposal to permanently close off Court Square. And speaking permanently for Amy and myself, housing should be our first priority as a community. And given all the needs in our community, we question how making the Common bigger rose to such a level of prominence. Thank you for entertaining our comments.
Thank you so much, Doug and Amy. Pamela Goodwin, your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street. I thank you for your time and I also want to thank all of you for all your hard work that I know you put in to help the city of Greenfield. Last meeting I attended, I was struck by what I felt were some rude remarks back and forth. And I've called a couple of counselors and said, what happened to agreeing to disagree respectfully? And I didn't think that we were timing the meetings. Couple of months ago, a meeting lasted until midnight. I know it was late. I watched the whole thing. The last meeting was over by nine. And I just want to say that I think if someone who's a counselor wants to respond to someone else's comment, even though it wasn't a question, that I feel that they should have the opportunity to do that. I also want to thank the mayor and the tree warden for saving the trees on Main Street. I knew that it was up to the mayor's individual decision, but she was going to confer, so I'm pleased to think that maybe only one tree is going to be taken down. I also want to thank MJ because I'm on the, I think it's called a local chapel, chap, chappa commission or subcommittee. And MJ quickly emailed those of us who participated some helpful information and will be working about abandoned buildings and some other things. And I want to also thank, I think it maybe was the mayor's decision to postpone the auction that was going to possibly lead to a loss of public use. And I, I was alarmed when I read that that was maybe going to go forward. So I do want to say I walked back up in there and I know other So I do want to say, I walked back up in there, and I know other people do, and so I'm pleased that possibly the parcels can be broken up and we can still use that for public use. I want to say a quick comment about the pedestrian walkway. I often turn left onto Federal from where I lived, then I need to take a right onto Main Street. Twice, as I've got the arrow to turn, I found these cars making U-turns right in front of me, and I was shocked that somebody wanted to just come over in front of me as I'm turning. We all know how long the lights are there, and I was going to always call the chief of police and ask him if he's aware that cars are now cutting right through other passing traffic who have the right of way. So I think it does disrupt the flow of traffic, and I have been, in the past, stated that I'm opposed to blocking off that whole area on a permanent basis, and I truly support the farmer's market and any other activities that's temporary. The last thing I want to say is, I don't, I guess I need to get on some Board of Health information and COVID information, because I listened to a great Board Health meeting, and they decided to hold off on the mask mandate, and then I went out of town to Framingham and found out we have a mask mandate, which I understand the Board of Health implemented in the town of Greenfield. I'll have to call them, I guess. I want to know if it's based on hospitalization, or if it's based on cases, or if it's based on, because I'm intrigued by that only because I just went to Turner's Falls and they don't have one. And they were serving up coffee, serve your own coffee at Cumberland's, and I could be wrong, but I believe that the Select Board is the Board of Health in the town of Turner's Falls, and possibly it's because we do have a jail here, we do have the hospital here, and it'll be a burden on me to figure out, like, what happened that we're all now wearing a mask every time we go indoors, and I will investigate that, and I apologize, but I just wanted to state, I know in the past, they talked about, what's Orange doing, what's Ethel doing, are we as intricate or as compacted as Amherst and North Hampton? And I love making my own decisions. I'm doubly vaccinated, but I am having to wear a mask even before the mask mandate at the senior center, and now I got to wear it everywhere I go indoors. So I do thank you for all your hard work, and I just, again, would like to state, I was so uncomfortable earlier, I almost jumped off, and you really don't want people jumping off just because it seems, you know, almost like bickering, and I know the difference between an executive session. I was glad it was clarified. I don't feel comfortable with people disparaging people at all, and I, so I just will leave it with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Pamela. Appreciate your words very much. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? You'd have to put your name in chat. I can't see everyone when they raise hands. Okay, so seeing none, I just want to thank the public who did speak and the public who came just to listen. All right, so at this time, we'll go to the public hearing. This is on page nine, and this will be Counselor Forgé. Do I have that right? No. Yes.
Yes, the public hearing and second reading are on page nine of the document.
Yeah. Ooh, I think you might be muted, or let me just play with mine. Thank you. Okay, is that better?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing. In accordance with Homeworld Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 22, 2021, at 6:30 PM via WebEx to receive public input on the following. Transfer $10,000 from reserve fund to DPW Park's swim area materials to cover expenses of the flooding at Nash's Mill Road Recreation Area. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, September 22, 2021, at 6:30 via WebEx. Materials may be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Penny Ricketts, City Council President. All right, so, okay, so the public hearing is now open, so if somebody wants to speak on just this public hearing, they could put their name and address in the chat. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
You are correct, and I don't see that anyone has entered their name in the chat box, and just as a reminder, the second reading does need to be held on the same page.
They can do that? Do I do it now or after you close?
As long as the president goes and disagrees, it can be done now.
City Council's second reading, September 22, 2021. Transfer $10,000 from reserve fund to DPW Park's swim area material to cover expenses of the flooding at Nash's Mill Recreation Area. Thank you, and seeing no one in the chat for this, I believe we should be able to close this now?
Yes, ma'am.
And close this, public hearing at 7:49. Okay. Motion, orders, and resolution. First one, page 10, again, I believe this is Counselor Forgé. I would like to, I would like to move that we take from the table, order number fiscal year 22-011. The City Council moved that it be ordered, that the City, Greenfield City Council, take from the table, order number fiscal year 22-001, upon recommendation of Mayor Wieder Gardner, that it be ordered. The Greenfield City Council authorizes the Greenfield-Montague Transportation Area, GMTA, to sell 830, excuse me, 382 Deerfield Street, accessories map 15-4-0, under their authority as the owners of the property, which was tabled at the July 21, 2021 City Council meeting. There's also a second to this point, so I'm asking, Madam Clerk, do I need to read this as well?
If the council wishes, if the council wishes to take the motion off the table.
Yes, do we have a second?
The motion needs a second, and then a roll call vote to take it off the table.
Second one. I don't know which second, which, who moved that?
I heard Counselor Elmer first. Is that acceptable?
Yes. Okay, so it's been made and seconded, so it's a roll call, Madam Clerk, to take it off the table.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo, you're muted.
Okay, can you keep going, and we'll come back to Counselor Mayo, please?
Certainly. Counselor Hershfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stumble Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Okay, could you continue on, please?
Counselor.
That'll be yes for me. Yes for Mayo.
Thank you. President Rickett?
Yes.
The motion is taken from the table.
Okay, Counselor Forgé?
Thank you very much. In July, we were asked to take this up at the time it was tabled, because everybody, I think, needed more information before they could make a decision. I've done research. It has gone out to everybody, probably went out in July. It was a copy of the notes, my notes, that I found with the research that I had done, and I also made a recommendation. My recommendation was made based on the fact that GMTA and FRTA are their separate and own entities, that they exist apart from the city of Greenfield and the town of Montague. We do have a letter that goes back a long period of time when the first two entities were put together, that was from Attorney Craig, and basically, it said that the legal standing is that the entities have a right to engage and sell their own property, and the opinion at the time was that it might be a good faith effort to get both of the municipalities on board with this. But realistically speaking, I believe that law is very clear, that they stand independent from us, and they can make their own decisions, and so for that reason, based solely on a legal designation that they are their own entities, I am advocating that we not vote these, because it really is not within our purview, our legal purview, as a council, to get involved in two separate legal entities of their own. There has been an association, there have been opportunities for cooperation, there have been, and currently do exist, the fact that the town does manage books, does that for the GMTA. I think these are previous vestiges of agreements that were made to put the entities together. And again, I would like to ask that we, as the body politic, on the legislative side, consider that we will not be involving ourselves in an issue that clearly and legally is a standalone for GMTA and FRTA. It's their decisions to make to sell their property, and we don't have any legal standing. So, Madam President, I thank you very much for letting me present my thoughts.
Thank you. So it's your recommendation that we just vote?
Just, my recommendation is that we, the mayor asked us for a recommendation to allow for property sale. My recommendation is that it's not necessary to have us vote on whether or not GMTA or FRTA can go ahead and need our permission to sell their property, so I am asking for a no vote.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarity. I'm sorry. I think you did it right probably the first time. I think I just was double-checking my own self. Thank you. So at this time, does anyone have any questions or comments? Please use the chat so that I can see, I can try to go back and forth. Counselor Wheeler?
How does the mayor, or the mayor's chief of staff, feel about the issue?
I can certainly answer, and so can Chief of Staff as well, because she is a member of the GMTA, but I am, I thank Counselor Forgé for bringing this forward. She is, in my opinion, and I think it would ultimately be in the opinion of any legal authority that we said, that we gave it to. She's correct, and, but I do want to let the council know, because if I'm not mistaken, one of Counselor Forgé's excellent suggestions in her memo to you folks, or notes, or whatever to you folks in July, was that at a minimum, that the GMTA and the FRTA enter into a new lease, so that a lease is in place in the event that we decide to sell it at any point in time, or put it on the market at any, when I say we, I mean the GMTA, at any point in time before the FRTA is ready to vacate. So for your information, I have begun to explore that. We are at a point, I think, where we've gotten agreement from Montague and, of course, from the city of Greenfield, members of the GMTA, and the FRTA is also interested in entering into that lease. So we will create a new lease for them, so that it is in place and protects them in the event that the building should be sold before they are ready to leave. They are building a new facility in Montague. That has been their goal for some time, not because they don't like Greenfield, but because they were not able to find a property that suited them here in Greenfield. So that's been their goal for some time. However, their bid documents have not quite gone out yet, so I believe they're a little bit, they're not necessarily behind in their schedule, but they're at the very early stages of it, and we, of course, want to protect their ability to stay there at any point in time. So I thank Counselor Forgé for that. If I had a vote, I would vote in favor of her no vote, so.
Okay.
And if you want Danielle to, Chief of Staff Danielle, let her speak, I'm happy to let her speak.
Well, she, I'm actually happy to let her speak, and she's in the chat, so hold on one moment.
I'll take her.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I'm jumping over you, Counselor Jarvis.
Well, you actually aren't, because I'm going to let Counselor Jarvis jump in.
Okay, do it.
Go ahead, Counselor Jarvis, and then Director Letourneau.
Well, actually, I think in the interest, Penny, because I was going to do something else, so I would let Counselor Letourneau speak before it's a moot point.
Okay, perfect. Director, go ahead.
Okay, I think the mayor said most of what I was going to say, but I did bring this to the subcommittee back in the summer, when we were first talking about this, and when we were writing this motion, it was very, it was very unclear, and we did have an inkling that perhaps it was unnecessary and maybe just a matter of a recommendation, and considering the fact that, you know, we occasionally lately run into things where a few little bits and pieces were never dealt with, especially in concerning property, and there's one of those on the agenda later on page 31. So I think that it was good that we put it on the agenda, just so, and I thank Counselor Forgé for doing all that research and finding out that, in fact, we don't need to vote on it. There's, I've learned so much about, not just real estate law, but how the, you know, these entities like GMTA work, so thanks for doing that due diligence, but I think you guys are right, this doesn't have to be voted on.
Okay, thank you so much, Director. Counselor Jarvis, you have the floor.
Okay, I just got a question, I guess it's a procedural question for the clerk.
Okay, I just got a question. Uh, I guess it's a procedural question for the clerk. Um, could I make a motion at this time to table this indefinitely in light of all the information? So we don't have to do this or I can't? Chris is shaking her head. No, I don't know if I can or I can't.
Um, so it's not, it's not recommended to make a motion to table indefinitely. Um, it, the motion can be defeated. If it is defeated, that it can't be brought up before the council in substantively the same form for a period of time. Um, I think to me, that sounds like it's okay because I think if this something came before the council again, it would not be in this form. It would be for, you know, a lease of some other form. So if, if this truly is not, it's, the mayor agrees that it should be defeated. A couple of things can happen. The mayor could withdraw her request or the council can defeat the request.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comment? So at this time, Madam Clerk, I'd like to have a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
I'll abstain right now.
Okay.
Counselor Gwynn?
No.
I'm not finding it. Do I do?
Disorder?
No.
Someone has their microphone on.
They do.
Is this, gonna look quickly before I continue on with the vote? I think they muted themselves. Sorry to interrupt, folks. Um, Counselor Bottomley? Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan?
No.
Vice President Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Abstain.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Herschel?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgie?
No.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Abstain.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, I vote no.
Uh, the motion passes as defeated with three abstentions.
Okay. Thank you. So next, we are on page 22. Counselor Gwynn?
Thank you, Mr. Ricketts. Um.
Excuse me, um, point of order, if I may? Um, yes, we just, we just defeated the first part of that. There was a second part of that.
Well, sorry about that.
Am I reading that incorrectly?
Um, I just threw mine on the floor with all my papers so somebody else can look, please.
Well, there is a, there was a second part of that. There were two pieces that had come through. And the second part of the order was fiscal year 22001. It says the city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reader Gardner, authorizes. Um, so this was the authority vote to, uh, sell the property. It says authorizes the GMTA transportation area to sell 382 Deerfield Street. Um, assesses map 15 dash four dash zero under their authority as the owners of the property. Um, again, I don't think that second part is necessary at this point.
Um, I'll check with Madam Clerk and here we go.
So the motion that was just defeated was the motion, um, under the authority of the owners of the property to sell the piece of property. So that was the motion that was taken from the table unanimously by the council and defeated.
Yes, but there were two pieces to that motion originally. Is everybody, um, excuse, uh, uh, I beg your pardon, Madam President.
Yes.
On page 10, you will see two parts of that order.
Yes.
And so if the first part is taken off the table, what happens to the second part? That would be the better question.
The first part, motion 22011.
Correct.
Took motion 22001 off the table. So motion 22001 was the motion that was taken off the table that was just discussed and defeated by the council. So the motion has been completed.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I'm sorry, Counselor Gwynn.
Okay, so I can throw all these back on the floor again, right? The order is a mess. Okay. Um, Counselor Gwynn?
Thank you. Um, a couple of points of clarification just before we start. Um, you, uh, there were some questions, um, brought up if we were following, uh, the procedure correctly for introducing these changes as I had set up through A and O. And, um, some of the councils were concerned and brought, uh, that up. And I wanted to make sure that their concerns were, uh, looked at. So I asked the mayor and the president if we could get, uh, the clerk to send a note to, uh, council, um, to clarify that we were following the right procedure. You would have all received that letter and I don't know if you want, uh, Clerk Scott to address it, but, uh, we would have received that on the 21st from, um, our attorney. And they said, uh, as you can see there in the letter, that the procedure that we've outlined, uh, in their opinion is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Did, did anybody have any questions about that before we get started? I just don't want to get into the weeds and have to back out. Okay, thank you, Counselor Gwynn. So.
I move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 1, incorporation, short title, definition, section 1 dash 7 definitions not be amended.
Do I have a second?
Second, Elmer.
Uh, this, uh, was brought up and discussed at appointments and ordinances. And they forwarded a positive recommendation to, um, not amend the definitions.
Okay, um, I believe Counselor Wheeler, right?
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
Um, so this, this is an issue that, you know, if, if we were taking it up in a, in a manner, worded differently, you know, would require a lot of, uh, a lot of input from the community. Um, personally, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but I haven't, there hasn't been that conversation from the community, so I take no position on it. I would, I would point out that before 1920, um, this was generally the case. Um, so it's not as radical as it might seem. However, um, being what I just said about really not feeling comfortable taking a position on this item since it has not had a deep discussion in the community and in, in light of how it's somewhat irregular to word a motion to not amend something, I move that we postpone the item indefinitely.
Okay, all right, so.
I will second.
I have a second, Counselor Jarvis.
Uh, I think somebody spoke on it.
This is Counselor Dolan. I, I seconded the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I can't, I did not hear you. I am so sorry.
Thank you. I do have that.
Okay, so a motion's been made and second to table indefinitely. So, um.
Uh, actually to postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely. What did I say? I'm sorry.
You said table, Madam Clerk.
But postpone indefinitely.
Is, is, where are we moving with this? Is there discussion on this? I'm just trying to see where we are at because now we have two motions, clarification here.
Right, Count, um, Madam Clerk was going, going to speak. And then I, I'm gonna go to Counselor Jarvis and Gilmore after the clerk tells us what the next step is.
So the motion, the motion on the floor is to postpone indefinitely. So that should be what the motion, the discussion is about.
Okay, and so Counselor Jarvis, do you want to speak on it being postponed indefinitely?
I will, and then I will re-put my name back in the chat again if we go back to the other motion. I guess my question is, is what is the definition of postpone indefinitely? Would be, because that's could be infinite or it could be next meeting or, or, or I guess I would have to have a clarification on the word postpone seeing that there's a slew of definitions, definitions for postponing.
Um, if, I will speak only if the clerk or no one else wishes to speak.
Um, I'm just giving the clerk a moment, but if, are you all set? Clerk, you would like Counselor Wheeler to take this or do you want to speak to it?
So, so Counselor Wheeler can certainly, um, speak to it. I will be doing some looking. I'm looking at Robert's rules right now. Um, a post, motion to postpone indefinitely is certainly acceptable. Um, it may not be amended. It does need a majority vote, uh, to pass. And that's all I'll say for now, but I will continue to look.
So my under, my understanding, having made it, is it's a debatable motion, and indeed we're debating it, uh, which can be brought back at the will of the body, but does not automatically get placed on agendas. And essentially unless there was will from the body to bring it back, it would not. Um, so it would not, uh, return to the agenda without further action.
Okay, um, so let me have Vice President Gilmore speak and then Counselor Forgie.
Thank you. I just, I have a question as far as, you know, so the impact of postponing something indefinitely. When we're talking about making updates to the charter, if there's anything hanging out that's, you know, postponed indefinitely that we don't take up, um, I'm wondering what does that mean for the charter review? Does, I mean, does that mean that it just stays as is if we don't take it up before it's finalized? I mean, what, what happens next if this just hangs out there?
Um, Madam Clerk?
So if, in short, it would just hang out there. Um, if, if the council didn't take it up, if it wasn't considered, if it wasn't voted on, um, the rest of the charter amendments that the council voted to move to the state for special legislation would move on. Um, this would just literally be postponed indefinitely.
So just to clarify, so if that's the case, voting to postpone this is basically the same thing as voting to not amend, correct? In practice?
Correct.
Right. And, um, Counselor Forgie, sorry.
Uh, for some clarification before I speak, Madam Clerk, um, the motion on the table now is whether we should or should not, um, we have a vote yes or no on postponement.
Correct.
Right. I will speak to whether or not we should postpone. Um, this has been a very long process. A number of us from the council have sat on the charter commission. Um, the charter commission did its work. Not everybody was in 100% agreement. But the work of a committee is to, uh, come to some sort of compromise piece and send it out so that it goes along to the council so the council can do its work. That happened. We had a public hearing. The public hearing, the only items that anybody was really interested in speaking about was 77 and 78 in, in our charter articles. Um, it seems ludicrous to me to vote, um, to uphold a postponement. And the reason is that if someone wanted to object on every single one of these things and postpone them out indefinitely, then we have no charter changes. And we have no document. The one that is in effect at this particular moment would stay in effect until there were changes made. And that was not the mandate from the charter or from the people when they voted the charter. I think this council, I think it's in the best interest of this council to get these changes out on council floor so that a real debate can take place. And people can familiarize themselves with the issues and then they can vote, which is what they were charged to do when they accepted public office. So having said all of that, I will not be voting for a postponement.
Okay, um, I'll let Counselor Gwynn speak first and then I will speak.
Um, most of what I was going to speak on has been covered by the, the people, uh, before me. I just want to also reiterate that, um, the charter review committee had public hearings and public input. And then we, as A and O, had a public hearing. Um, so there was opportunity for the public to speak on any of these recommendations. This was presented to us in a form that showed where they came up with the ideas of changes or not to change that was available, uh, from, uh, the clerk's office, um, to any member of the public after it came through. So, um, that being said, um, although the, the end result would be the same, um, in that if we did not amend or we just left it unchanged, it, it wouldn't, the end result, but I also feel that, um, it would probably be in, in better, um, order to, to either forward it or not forward it, not suspend.
Okay, thank you. So out of respect for everyone's time that was on charter commission, and I'm talking months and hours, I agree with my colleagues and I cannot vote to postpone just because the public could hear. They have heard this at the charter level and lots of people were there in the very beginning. As soon as the site got on just a couple pieces, they didn't pay attention to the rest of this charter. But we as counselors, we are paying attention. We have had this in our email. We have had discussions. We've had subcommittee meetings and stuff. So at this point, I just want to do the job that I got elected to do. So I can't vote to postpone at this time. And so would anybody else like to speak on this? Um, I'm, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to put your name because I have to keep switching my screen if you're gonna raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. So first, we, Madam Clerk, make sure I'm doing this right. We will vote on Counselor Wheeler's motion.
On the motion to postpone.
Please explain that people vote yes or no to that. If they vote no, then we go back to the original one and we vote on that, correct?
Correct. Again, a vote would postpone the motion. A no vote would then allow the council to deliberate on motion order number 22012 for charter amendment section 1 dash 7.
Okay. Is everyone set?
On the motion to postpone, Counselor Jarvis? On the motion to postpone, Counselor Jarvis.
No.
Counselor Glenn?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Stand.
Vice President Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo, you're muted. I'll come back to you. Oh, there you are.
No.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Oh.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgie?
No.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and I vote no.
The motion is defeated by majority. The motion on the table is to consider amendment not to be amended to definition section 1-7.
Okay. Is there any, um, Counselor Wheeler?
Is the parliamentarian present?
He is not.
Well, I'm looking at the participant.
Um, I will check, but last I knew, no.
Then, uh, Clerk Scott, you, you will have to suffice. Um, my question, my question.
Wow.
And I have confidence, I have confidence.
What about the way we speak to people?
I have confidence. I think you, uh, I trust your answer. Um, my question is simply, can this body vote not to amend something that was never proposed to be amended? Can this body vote not to do something?
Or instead of it should?
May I ask, um, Counselor Glenn?
You were not on the floor. Go ahead.
So Counselor Glenn is in the chat box. Would you like me to speak or should Counselor Glenn speak?
Um, Counselor Glenn, did you want to hear her answer or did you want to say something?
I, I would love to hear her answer and then I will just reiterate something.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so it is unusual for a motion to be put forward in, um, to not amend something, but the Appointments and Ordinance Committee made a recommendation to the council not to make this amendment. Um, it was something that was addressed in the Charter Review Committee report. The A&amp;O Committee wanted to acknowledge that they made that recommendation or they included it in their report. Um, motions are usually formed so that the positive vote, so a yes vote, would approve the motion. So they wanted to not have this language be changed, so in order to garner a yes vote, a positive vote, the motion had to be formed in the negative. Clear? Bud?
Okay, Counselor Glenn.
Um, Clerk Scott, these were sent to coun, uh, legal counsel. Uh, that was our, that was our delay from last meeting. So we sent these out for opinion and the language was looked at for all of these. Is that correct?
Correct.
So whether it's the parliamentarian or yourself, we, we got legal opinion on these, correct?
We did.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Um, let me get back. Uh, Vice President Gilmore?
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, I, I was a member of the, the Review Committee and I know that there were several of us who were on that committee who worked very hard. We went through with a fine tooth comb. We had the public come and speak to us. Several of our counselors who are not members of the committee attended those meetings because they wanted to know what was going on and, and what we're working on. And I think that maybe it would help to clarify that on the committee, we spent a lot of time talking about what does this sentence mean? What does this paragraph mean? How does this play out? We talked about worst-case scenarios. We talked about what sort of issues we were trying to either prevent or, or, you know, what sort of circumstances we wanted to nurture as a town. And these were long conversations that happened over months in the most uncertain parts of the pandemic, and it required a lot of attention. And I would like to, you know, if I could call out, Counselor Forgie really did so much of the yeoman's work on this. Um, this issue is not something that the committee really made a very strong recommendation on, but it's something that we talked about and it was important to move that forward to A&amp;O. Once it came to A&amp;O, because there was a recommendation, I feel like Counselor Glenn really did his due diligence to make sure that we were going to take up all of the different recommendations and now it's here at the council floor. And I don't expect that every single member of the city council took the time to read the charter line by line. Um, it was difficult, it was tedious, and it took us a long time to go through this. So I understand that. I think that if people want more time to talk about that, um, and they want more time to sort of read through these recommendations as they come forward, I would suggest that that's something that needs to happen before it comes to the full council. Um, I'm glad that we didn't postpone this. This is something that I think did not get fleshed out, and because of that, I'm not going to be able to vote yes on the main motion. I don't know what the impact of this change is going to be, and I think that when we don't know the impact of a change, we stick with the status quo. I have not had people reaching out to me asking to make this change, and I don't feel like I know enough about this to prescribe to the entire town of Greenfield and all of my neighbors that we need to do this. So I would just like to say if we could move forward and, you know, have these conversations, talk it out, debate, there are counselors here who are part of the process from the beginning, and we do remember what happened, and we are happy to provide that insight and try not to taint it with too much bias, and I just want to see this charter really get the attention that it deserves and in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan?
Yeah, can you hear me? There I am. Um, I just wanted to speak to this briefly. Um, I, I was not able to attend the A&amp;O meeting where this was discussed. I suspect I'm gonna be in the minority on the vote and just want to explain, um, my fruitless protest vote. Um, I will never vote against an opportunity to expand the franchise. Um, I think voting is really important and I don't think that.
Momboy.
Has much to do, um, with municipal politics. That's really something that happens at the federal level. There's nothing forbidding this. So I don't, I don't understand why we would not want to represent a greater swath of the community. Um, so I will be paradoxically voting against taking no action. Um, this is something I would support at some point in the future.
Okay, um, thank you. I don't, I don't know who just yelled out. Um, I just, let's, um, just grow up, please, okay? That's all I'm gonna ask right now. I mean, I know we've seen some real immaturity here tonight. Let's, can we just stop it right here, please? Counselor Forgie, then Counselor Jarvis.
Um, following up on what, um, Counselor Gilmore mentioned, um, if we leave it as is, okay, um, that is, that is one thing. That is one thing. Um, when we were discussing this in Charter Committee, in Charter Committee, there was, as Counselor Gilmore mentioned, an awful lot of discussion that went on. Um, I would, I would like to quote, um, from the council report on page seven. At the bottom, the last paragraph, um, really talked about where we found ourselves in the deliberation and what Resident Alien actually meant. And, um, it go, it does say that Resident Alien, uh, status is expressly barred from voting in national elections, but they have, in some instances, been granted voting rights in local elections by a handful of municipalities across the country. So the question really came down to should residents, uh, aliens, if granted the right to vote, also be granted the right to run for office in Greenfield? That was the second question that came out as a result of the first discussion. This is the piece that I think is very significant. It says, "The committee discussed this issue and some members stated that being a U.S. citizen should be defined, should be the defined limiting qualification for a voter, while others stated that allowing a resident alien to vote may be permitted. However, the committee did not decide if a resident alien should be permitted to run for election, elected office." So the question only pertains to whether or not we are changing the definition of a voter to allow for a resident alien, uh, participation. We are not changing anything in regard to whether or not a resident alien has a right to run for a public election in Greenfield. Um, yes, there were a member, a couple of members of this committee, uh, myself included, that do believe that citizenship, um, is a very, U.S. citizenship is particularly important, and it should be defined as people that are born in the United States or have, uh, nat, naturalized. Um, the piece that is most significant, at least the way I look at it right now, is all of the nations are sovereign nations in that if I went to England or France and said, "I'm working in your country and I'm paying your taxes, but I want to vote in the election," I don't think that's gonna happen. I still hold a U.S. passport, and that U.S. passport qualifies me to vote in the United States. There's been too many things that have gone on. We are a nation that welcomes, but we are also a nation that is defined by our sovereignty, and I for one will vote to keep the definition of voter as a registered voter in the city of Greenfield. Voter meaning that you have to be a U.S. citizen. So I will vote for that. Thank you, Madam President, for letting me speak to the issue.
Yes, Counselor Jarvis.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to say that, that we, that we vetted this out, we talked about it in, in, in A&amp;O, and, um, during our discussions, I, I brought up that I was approached by a family of large numbers of, of members that, that were, that were, were so, so much against changing aliens' voter rights, um, because to them, their important part with getting their citizenship was being able to vote, to say that they're an American and be able to vote. It was very important to them and they, they, they adamantly were almost so passionate about it, it wasn't, wasn't funny. Um, as the other side of the coin could be passionate that they want to vote, but, but with the hard work of becoming a citizen, this is your reward. You are able to vote as a U.S. citizen. Um, and, and I don't think it's up, up for us to say that, you know, the way things go, federal law supersedes state law, and state, state law supersedes town bylaws and charters. Um, so I don't think, I, I don't think it's up to the city, city of Greenfield or the city council to supersede federal law. Um, so with, with that family speaking so passionately against having any changes done to this part of the charter, I, and, and, um, I for one believe in if you, if you want all your rights as a U.S. citizen, become a U.S. citizen. Um, that's what I have to say on it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All right, so we're back at the top again. So, Madam Clerk, what is a yes and a no vote for everyone?
Certainly, um, if a counselor would like, I'm gonna paraphrase here. If a counselor would like to check, change the definition in section 1-7, they would vote no. If they want it to remain the same, they would vote yes.
Point of, point of information, though, uh, if a counselor wishes to change the definition, a vote to change the definition will have no effect because of the wording of the motion.
Could you say that one more time, Counselor Wheeler?
What I'm saying is if, um, if a, a, no vote will have no effect, it will not actually amend the motion.
Correct, because there is no specific definition to amend it.
That's correct.
To a different.
And that's why I objected in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Anyone else have anything before we take a roll call vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, do what you do.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan?
No.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld? Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes by majority.
Okay, Counselor Glenn.
Counselor Glenn, you are unmuted.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, I move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 2, Legislative Branch, Section 2-1, Composition, Term of Office B, Term of Office, be amended as indicated below with a strike-through text to be removed and bold, um, text to be added. Term of Office. The term of office city council shall be for two years, beginning on the first business day of January after the city election and until the city council's successors have been qualified, and that the city council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and requests said legislator to amend the city charter.
Second, Forgie.
Um, this was not a recommendation from the Charter, uh, Review. This was brought up by Counselor Elmer, um, so he might want to speak to this.
This was brought up by Counselor Elmer, so he might want to speak to this. We also had, it was a, it was defeated to send a positive recommendation, so it was a negative recommendation on the changing of the years from appointments and ordinances.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, Counselor Elmer, would you like to speak to this, or would you like us just to vote? It's up to you.
I would like to speak to this.
Please.
Well, what I said at A&amp;O, I'll say again, it's a, it's a long term. Four years is a long time. It's a hard job, and it's a lot of work, and I think, as evidenced that it's sort of too much, I look at the, we have seven seats coming up for reelection, for election this, this, this year, and three of those seats are unopposed, and two of them, we couldn't get anyone to run. So, in a, you know, we've done a couple of things that make it harder for people to participate in this government. We, we have, we keep declining to raise the salary from 2,000, which isn't much of an incentive, and, and four years is a long time. Four years is what we elect a president for. Six years is what we elect a senator for. Two years is what we elect a representative for in this country. And I would argue that as the legislative body of Greenfield, two years is a good, is a, we, we might take what our national legislature does as an example. One more point, if I don't, if it doesn't escape my consciousness right now, well, I'll come, if, if I think of it, I'll come back.
Okay, take your time.
Thank you.
Yep, take your time. Does anyone else have anything to say about this?
I do.
Who said I do?
Counselor Glenn.
Thank you. I shouldn't know the radio voice, sorry.
That's all right, I'm sorry. I'll go back to the Dan voice. I just wanted to say that, you know, we opened these up so any of the counselors could bring forward any changes, and this is one Counselor Elmer, you know, came up with, and like I said, it wasn't recognized prior. The only thing that I always will bring up is precedent. The problem with the suggestion of going to two years could set up the possibility of a complete change in membership at the same time. So, it's not likely, but it allows for an entire turn of the council on a given election. So you would have an entire council of new counselors, which means there would be no history for anyone to serve in any kind of, the role of a president or vice president, or all of that would be being picked from 12 counselors or so that have never served. The chances are that it wouldn't happen, but it does set that up for a possibility. I talked to Clerk Scott and, and got some feedback from her, and I don't want to talk for her, but she also said that those are, were negative possibilities with a complete flip in council with no counselors that had any history of town government.
Okay. Thank, thank you. So what I'd like to add is, as a counselor, I have to say that it takes me more than two years just to get lots of this knowledge under my belt. Things happen. I mean, I look at this charter right now, and I think about what if we ever decided to put things aside, postpone indefinitely, and we have counselors who've already been involved in the process that aren't coming back in January. And look what simply happens each January when we change committees and such. We just can't do it. Two years is just not enough. You just don't know all there is about council. The thing that makes me the most scared about two years is that you can get a group of people who will run because they want to see one specific agenda item, and they're going to come in and push that, and then they're going to leave council. And that's all that they came on council for, is just to be a block vote on something. And, Madam Clerk, and then Counselor Stempel Ray after that.
Counselor Dolan had put his name in the chat box, and I think we had both overlooked it.
Oh, okay, oop, I am so sorry, Counselor Dolan, I did not see that.
That's totally fine.
Okay, but could, could you speak up a little, because I keep putting my volume all the way to the top and I can't hear you?
I am sympathetic to Counselor Elmer's arguments on this one. I do want to point out what this motion lacks is any kind of an implementation timeline. So I think in order to do this effectively and make it viable, we would have to set dates that account for the current staggering of the, of the counselors. It would take me a little bit of math to figure out exactly how to do that, but this can't go into effect in the middle of a counselor's term without some sort of a transition timeline. So with that in mind, I would motion to table.
Okay. All right, not hearing a second. Okay, just one moment. Who is leaving the meeting, City of Greenfield? Is that the mayor, or, I didn't know if it was one of our counselors who popped in. I'm reading which.
No, it's, I'm sorry, Madam President, it's the mayor.
Okay.
As, as I indicated in the chat, I regret having to leave it because it's an important conversation, but I'm afraid I'm really low on battery. I'll stay on for a couple more minutes.
Okay, he has, you have a few things that go on in your life on a daily basis, so you, you, you can go.
I'm staying.
The missing battery power is a problem, because that's two days in a row now, so apparently it's not in this briefcase either.
Okay, so.
Back to work, I appreciate it.
So, Vice President Gilmore, can you watch the chat and leave this meeting for a minute? I have Counselor Hirschfeld calling me, and I just need to take this, and I might need to come back and talk to Madam Clerk, because I don't know what this is about. So please continue on, folks, and if you have to do.
Absolutely. So next I see Counselor Elmer.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Glenn reminded me, the, the last thing I wanted to say, which is that, that the argument against it, one big argument against a two-year term is that there's a possibility, a mathematical possibility, of 13 brand-new counselors, which I agree, would not be a great thing. It, it is not very likely, it is not in the history of Greenfield anything that's happened, and I would argue that if all 13 counselors get voted out of office the same year, maybe they were doing something wrong. I, I think that's participatory democracy. So, and, and to answer the mathematical problem of what you do with the four-year terms, it's going to be a while before this is approved by the state, and I would suggest that everybody just, we, we could write some language that says everybody just finishes their term before we go to the two-year term, but maybe that's something we could do after, if we want to table this. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel Ray?
Interesting, because as someone who became a counselor right when we started transitioning to the four-year term, I don't think the transition is, is a problem. I say a problem, because I remember the Clerk's office when we went through the transition before, but that's why we staggered the terms, and I think it also benefited the Clerk's office back then, because we didn't have the entire city up for election on the same year every X amount of years. It is a weird time, because there are seats that might go vacant, and I, in the history of Greenfield politics, in the history of my service, I've just never seen that, especially at-large counselor seats going left vacant. And so there's a problem, and I think Counselor Elmer brought up really good points, and it really made me kind of stop and pause, and, and it could be, we tend to have very long meetings, we tend to deal with some very tumultuous issues, we tend to deal with a lot of negativity lately, there's just a lot of work that goes into it. I, I can't really say or want to assume why there's nobody stepping up to the plate, but it could possibly be that four years is intimidating. And to, to say that we don't want new counselors or a council of new counselors, like this is democracy, so if that's what's, if that's what happens, I, I feel like it'll be okay. I joined council when there, I think the majority of the council was new. There might have been four, there might have been four remaining experienced, so to speak, counselors on the board, and we were okay. We, we did fine, and I think we had a lot of good work done in those two years before we transitioned. So, long story short, maybe that is something we should really think about. Maybe there's an odd-year system, maybe it's three the right amount, if two is too few. But it is something to think about. For, having served both a two-year and now a four-year term, four does feel like a lot of years for somebody who's stepping up to the plate as a volunteer and not trying to be a career politician. Four years does seem like a lot, and I'm sorry, but I disagree with President Ricketts. That's why people sign up to volunteer for public services, because there's something that lights a fire under their bum and they want to make a change. And so who are we to say that you can't step up to the plate because that's what you want to do? But anyways, I hope we can continue the conversation about maybe there's a, maybe there's a three- or four-year or two-year discussion. I, I think while we might not make a change tonight, it's something for the future.
Okay, thank you, I'm back. Counselor Hirschfeld, you got back in. Thank you. Am I stepping on anybody right now? Counselor Mayo and Kathy, Counsel Clerk?
Counselor Mayo is next to speak.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mayo and.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say, in my first four months as, as a four-year counselor in Precinct 8, I walked every day from my house to the town hall to work on a particular issue that was brought to my attention, and so it took me four months to deal with one issue, and it, it ended up to be a, a very gratifying situation. I was very proud of what I did, but it was, it was very time-consuming, but at, at the same time, I was still learning how to be a city counselor, but I was also in, in the trenches doing the work that we needed to do. So I, I, I'm a little, I think two years is, is too little time. It's, it, you just get used to being a city council, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, and that you, you don't have enough experience, most of us, you know. It took me two years to basically feel comfortable enough to deal with some very important issues that the council was dealing with, and prior to that, I don't think I would have the, the confidence or the, the experience to, to deal with that. So, but I, I do agree that four years is a long time, and it can take a lot out of you, but I also learned, I also know that you, 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 you can't learn it all in two years. It takes a little bit of time, and so that's why I'm going to be voting. I'm not sure how we're, I'll have to remember how we're being told how to vote, but anyway, I'm going to vote for keeping it as it is, a four-year term.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, and then Counselor Hirschfeld, and then Counselor Forgie.
I defer to Counselor Hirschfeld and Forgie.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
So I'm back in.
Oh, you're back in.
Back in. I'm back in, but I also want to speak, because I had, I'm sorry, I missed a lot of the comments, because my, I just lost everything on the, on the WebEx. I had a very difficult time trying to find anyone to fill my shoes. I also had other people looking, too, and I think, you know, part of it is four years, part of it is the, the Precinct 9 is a tough, tough precinct to get representation. It's been this way before I became a counselor, and that it's been going on almost, I've been a counselor for almost seven and a half years now, and it's, it's tough. So extending it to four years makes it harder, I believe, for, for us to get people to run. It's, I think if it were three years, goes back to three years, that's a, a good number. It gives people a little bit more time to get used to being on the council and feeling how the city and its finances work. So that's what I, that's what I feel.
Okay.
Anyway.
Thank you, Counselor Hirschfeld. Before I get to you, Counselor Forgie, Counselor Dolan, you have a point of information?
Yes. Would someone be able to clarify, if this gets voted down, how long is it before something similar can come back?
Madam Clerk?
Nine months.
Nine months, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Forgie? Thank you, Counselor Dolan. Page eight of the document that was given to us from the Charter Committee, the discussion, it's interesting, the discussion that took place and the suggestions that we received from the public were really about the number of counselors, so whether we should increase from 13 to whatever other number, or reduce to seven or another number. The statement in this document says as follows, "The committee is comfortable with the current number and arrangement." So I just thought I'd throw that out there to let you know that's what the committee's report said. Okay, Counselor Forgie, you know, and I do remember, a big part of this conversation has been about trying to make it nine counselors and having them all at large, and I know that was a very big topic as well. So then let me go to Counselor Elmer, and then Madam Clerk.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Counselor Mayo. If you, if, if a counselor felt like two years wasn't enough and they, and they had just, were just getting up to speed, they can run again. And in Greenfield, if you, if you've made yourself known once, it's not that hard to get reelected. Then finally, I would be willing to table or withdraw this for further discussion later, rather than have it wait nine months. If I could ask the President or the Clerk what, what they'd prefer?
It's not my choice to make. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Glenn, would you like to speak first?
Well, you and I are just going to run into.
Well, you and I are just going to run into, we're talking in specifics to bringing things up in nine months, which is a normal council procedure. We don't have nine months to get these recommendations for a charter. We have six months from the time of receipt. So by putting these things to, however, in bringing them back, they're not going to make it into the recommendation. Remember, we have to have the recommendations made. The recommendations then go to the mayor. The mayor changes them in her way, and then they go on to the legislature as one packet. So we have to be very careful on how we proceed. Clerk Scott, that was just my point when we're talking timetable.
So I just wanted to touch on a few things that I've heard, just to give you a different perspective. So the city is on a biennial schedule, that's every other year for election. So you either have a two, four, six, eight type of schedule. Is the council only going to consider changing the council term? Is the council also going to consider changing the mayoral term or the school committee term? Those are also four years. If the council votes to change the terms of elected bodies, there will need to be a ballot question on the next local election where the citizen to weigh in on whether they want that term changed. Three-year terms, although it sounds great, and whatever the council does is what the council does, but that doesn't fit with the biennial schedule. And one last piece, if it changes to two years and the potential is there for a new city council every other year, and yes, people can run again and they can get signatures. But there's something that I want to say for historical knowledge. When you, when you have been on the council for four years, eight years, first of all, bless you. Second of all, the historical knowledge that you bring forth to that body is almost immeasurable. You know, many of you have been on the board for a number of years. Maybe you took a hiatus. Maybe you came back. Maybe you took another position with the city. But the knowledge that you gained from being a member of this body is immeasurable. Whatever the council decides to do, that's the will of the council. I also want to remind people that the past year and a half is not how government usually runs.
Exactly.
Their, this virtual meeting has certainly not created a team atmosphere. But whatever the council does, that's the will of the council will be done. You know, it has to make it through the mayor, has to go through the legislature. And I just wanted to say my two piece, two cents, sorry. All that, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Glenn, did you want to speak again, or is that?
Yeah, there was one piece that we did not go over, no one brought up, that I think has some, and that's, if we did go to a two-year, which I talked with Counselor Elmer on the floor about, that means you have, you finish your first year, and when you start your second year, you're already collecting signatures and technically campaigning to go, to win for your third year. Because in your second year, you've got to go back out and collect signatures, and you're out there, and if it was an at-large seat, which could have multiple people, then you're campaigning every two years. And we talked about that too, as a, as a tough thing. We talked about signatures and all that. At-large has a lot of signatures to collect. They'd be doing that before they even finished. They barely finished their first year and they're already trying to campaign for the next one. And that was a point that was brought up in discussion also. That's it.
Yes. Okay, so, is there any, is this horse dead, or would we like to keep going? Is there anything else? Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to mention, so.
It's about?
A motion can be withdrawn at any time prior to the vote being declared. So if anyone wanted to withdraw a motion, they could certainly do that. I just wanted to mention that it could be done.
Okay, thank you so much.
Counselor Elmer has his hand up, doesn't ever get.
Okay. Counselor Elmer, I cannot see.
I'd say let's vote on it.
Say that one more time?
I'm for voting on it tonight, whether the other.
Okay. If there's no more questions, comments, Madam Clerk, would you like to take a roll call and let everyone know what the no and the yes means for this portion?
So if you vote no on the order that's before you, number 22013, to change the term of counselor from four years to two years, if you want that change to occur, you would vote yes. If you want it to remain the same, you would vote no.
Thank you.
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Glenn?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
I can't hear you, Counsel Wheeler, I think you're muted.
Okay, I voted yes.
Thank you. Counselor Mayo?
Yeah, no.
Counselor Hersfeld? Counselor Hersfeld?
Let me just check if, see if he's here. He keeps losing connect. Oh, yes.
Counselor Hersfeld, you are muted. Could you unmute yourself and I will come back to you? Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
No.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
I see that Norm's unmuted. Did you want to?
Sure. Counselor Hersfeld?
No.
I recorded you as a no, thank you. Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Uh, yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and I vote no.
Thank you. The motion passes by majority.
Point of order? Do you say it passes by majority?
I'm, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Counselor Elmer. I'm so sorry. The motion is defeated by majority.
Phil was already jumping for joy.
Defeated by majority. I'm sorry, folks.
It's okay, I knew, I knew what you meant. So now we go back to the original motion and?
Nope, that is the original motion.
That is the motion.
That is the original motion.
Oh, yeah.
The motion failed, the charter remains the same.
Perfect.
Clerk Scott, moving forward, I'm taking that page 24 is not a motion. That would have been a definition change had we changed something differently on my first motion, is that correct?
Correct.
So 24 does not need to be discussed. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article II Legislative Branch, Section 2-2, Council President, A, Election in Term, be amended as indicated below with the strike-through text to be removed and the bold text to be added, Council President and Vice President. Election in Term. On the first business day of the new year, the members of the city council shall elect from among its members a council president and vice president, who shall serve during the ensuing year. And that the city council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second, Forgé.
Thank you.
Let me just say that it was a positive unanimous recommendation from A and O to change Section 2-2, Section A, C, and to add D as recommended by the Charter Review Committee. We're going to take them all separately on three different pages, but they all were under the same vote in A and O, although they were discussed separately with a positive unanimous recommendation.
Okay. So, does anybody have any questions or comments, or do you want to even discuss them all separately as well? I mean, the questions could be for any piece of this, right?
There's three separate motions.
motions, right.
President Ricketts?
Yes.
The motion should be discussed separately, because they're three separate motions.
Okay. So you want to just do the first motion, Counselor Glenn, and then we'll vote?
So that is the first motion that I read.
Was for the president, right?
Yeah, adding the, the vice president and talking about the first business day, those are the changes as you have before you in the strike-through version.
Right. Are there any questions, comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote and yes and no, what does that mean?
A yes vote would take the recommendation of A and O and change the charter as indicated in the package under motion 22015. A no vote would leave the charter language as it is currently.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hersfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Counselor Glenn?
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article II Legislative Branch, Section 2-2, Council President, Section C, Council Vice President, be amended as indicated below with the strike-through text to be removed and the bold text to be added, Section 2-2, Council President and Vice President. Section C, the Council Vice President. The vice president shall serve as acting president. Council Vice President, who shall serve as an acting president during the temporary absence or disability of the council president during the ensuing term of office, the powers of an acting council president shall be limited to only those powers of the president as may be necessary to conduct the business of the city council in an orderly and efficient manner and which may not be delayed.
Second, Mayo?
D is in this same piece, so D, adding vacancies in the office of president or vice president. In the event the council president or vice president shall vacate their office for any reason prior to the end of their term of office, at the next regularly scheduled meeting after such vacating and prior to conducting business, the councilor shall elect from among its members a successor president or vice president to serve for the remainder of the term. And that the council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second, Mayo?
Once again, this received a positive unanimous recommendation, and it was a recommendation from the Charter Review to add Section D, because that was never addressed in the charter prior, and left kind of a unknown factor.
Great. Counselor Elmer?
Yes, I'm, I'm wondering if there was a transcription error in C. It reads better if it just goes, "The vice president shall serve as acting president during a temporary absence or disability and so on." It seems like some, some words got, that should have been deleted, didn't get deleted. Am I wrong? It doesn't track the way it is. If you skip from the bold-faced words directly to "during the temporary absence," then it does track.
It's like it got pasted twice.
Right. I think so.
The council vice president portion is the original text. When it start, right after the bold, that was the original. They just reprinted it. All they did was change the header.
This is Chris Forgé. Can I speak, Counsel Forgé? Please, yes. Thank you. Counselor Elmer, are you, is that, is that what you, are you saying that the "who" in that, in that first line, "who" needs to be removed?
No, I'm saying, if I could clarify, the bold-faced words, "the vice president shall serve as acting president," if you skip directly to, in the next line, the verb "during," or whatever it is, if you skip the "during," it, it tracks. It looks like the words "council vice president, who shall serve as acting president" was repeated by mistake.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
I would like to move that we amended, a friendly amendment, to strike the words that aren't in bold face that start "council vice president, shall serve as acting president" and, and strike that part. Is that clear?
Yes.
Second, Wheeler.
Okay. We have a motion, we have it seconded for a friendly amendment. Madam Clerk, were you raising your hand or telling us to stop?
Terrified. I just want to take the terrifying that the language would say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the vice president shall serve as acting president during the temporary absence or disability, complete the phrase, complete the paragraph.
Yes.
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 And may I request one more thing?
Yes.
Since friendly amendments are not really appreciated, and there is a motion on the floor and a second on the floor, could the council say without objection, the amendment is made? If anyone has an objection, please speak.
If I could, I would withdraw my, what did I, what did I make, a motion?
A motion.
And just with the, if the council agrees, just change that as, as a friendly amendment. Does it need a second?
Is it a regular amendment?
So, so with, without objection, the amendment is made?
Yes, without objection, the amendment is made.
Thank you. President Ricketts, do you so declare it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Boom, declared. Okay.
Now we have to vote.
So the motion is on the table.
Counselor Wheeler, have you not been here to speak yet? I'm not sure where you were in here.
Counselor Elmer said what I had to say.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Roll call vote? Yes and no?
So a yes vote will amend the charter, a no vote will remain the same. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Mayo, I didn't hear you.
He said yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn?
Now we're on page 28, is that correct?
Yeah.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 2, Legislative Branch, Section 2-6, Exercise of Powers, Quorum Rules, C, Rules of Procedure 2, be amended as indicated below with the strike-through text to be removed and the bold test to be added. Special meetings of the City Council, two. "Special meetings of the City Council shall be held at the call of the Counsel President or on the call of any five or more members by written notice delivered in hand or to the place of residence of each member or by secure electronic communication that allows receipt confirmation and which contains a listing of the items to be acted upon, except in the case of an emergency of which the Counsel President shall be judge. Such notice shall be delivered at least 48 hours in advance of the time set for such meeting. A copy of the notice to members shall forthwith be posted upon the city bulletin board. And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislator to amend the city charter."
Second, Forgie. Thank you.
Counselor, President Ricketts?
Yes.
I think that Counselor Gilmore reviewed this piece recently, and she might have an update on the content as she filled in for me wonderfully in a, in a situation where I couldn't make the meeting.
Vice President Gilmore?
So, this one wasn't taken up at the last A and O meeting, but I will say that we were discussing this on the Charter Committee. This update allows some flexibility, hopefully, that will take some of the burden off of the clerk's office so that if we have a special meeting, instead of having to drive around from door to door and post envelopes on people's doors with masking tape, the clerk or somebody from the clerk's office could make a phone call or send an email asking for confirmation from the counselors. It doesn't, it's not, it, it, it doesn't mean that we could not have any kind of paper delivery. It just means that it allows some flexibility so that, for example, if the clerk called me while I'm at work, I could answer my phone and say, yes, I can be there, and then they don't have to drive to my house. Whereas if they couldn't get ahold of someone over the phone, they would still deliver a paper notice. So it just allows some more flexibility and hopefully streamlines the process. You know, we're, we're not living in the time of the town crier ringing their bell, "Hear ye, hear ye", on the town phone anymore, so we'd like to reflect that.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I have Counselor Jarvis and then Madam Clerk.
Excuse me if we're, if I'm wrong, but I do believe we did discuss this at the last A and O meeting, and, or maybe I'm the only one that thought we discussed this.
I thought you discussed it at the meeting, because I remember the, when I was reviewing the meeting, there was discussion about the delivery process.
If I, if I'm confusing the two meetings, then I apologize.
That's okay, I just wanted to refresh, refresh people's memory that we did discuss this. And, and my only concern was, was that the person, like, as in the previous City Council, we had a counselor that didn't have a computer or electronic means of notification. So this would mean that the city clerk would have to make sure that those people that don't have means of electronic communications did receive their paper notice. That was my only concern, that it was brought up, and it said "and/or", so I guess it's covered. Am I right, Clerk Scott?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk Scott, did you want to add something else?
No, I didn't. I, thank you, done.
Okay, perfect, okay, nothing else? Let's vote. Roll call, please, yes and no?
A yes would change the charter as reflected in the packet and a no would remain the same. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
That was a yes.
Thank you. I apologize, I have another, like a delay or something. Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the end is near, guys. We're, we're getting there, we're getting closer. Okay, so I believe Counselor Forgie, you are up. I am, thank you. Twenty-nine, yeah. Okay, Order Number Fiscal Year 22-009, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, and in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Reserve Fund Transfer Request, move that it be ordered, ordered that the sum of $10,000 be transferred from 01001320.5781 Reserve Fund to DPW Parks 01004380.5433 Swim Area Materials to cover expenses associated with the unforeseen flooding at Nash's Mill Road Recreation Area. Reserve Fund balance is $75,000. Balance in 01004380-5433 Swim Area Materials is $7,000. Majority vote required. This was unanimously approved by the Ways and Means Committee.
Second, Mayo.
Perfect. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan?
Yes. Did you hear that?
Counselor Gilmore? Yes, I did, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Counselor Wheeler?
I'm sorry, did you?
Yes.
Yes, I got your yes. Counselor Gilmore and Counselor Wheeler.
Oh, I vote yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mayo?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
She said yes.
She said yes.
Yeah.
She said yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so a couple more left, and we're going to scream out those votes. Okay, it makes the time go by faster, just believe me. Okay, so Counselor Disorder? Thirty-one, I believe you're up.
Order Number FY22-021, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Roxanne Rita Gardner, move that it be ordered. The City Council authorizes the mayor to release the city's right title and interest in the paper street that goes across the property as shown on Plan Book C, Page 97, and further described as follows. Beginning at a point on the northeasterly corner of Lot 13, thence continuing in a westerly direction along Lots 14, 15, and a portion of Lot 16 to the easterly side of the existing private road, a total distance of approximately 260 feet. Thence northerly along the private road to Lot 38, being approximately 60 feet. Thence easterly along Lots 38, 39, 40, and Lot 32 to Montague City Road, approximately 250, 60 feet. And then southerly along Montague City Road, approximately 60 feet, to the point of beginning, all as shown on a certain plan of land recorded in the Franklin Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 6, Page 97. Majority vote required.
Okay, and what came out of your committee? Second, Forgie. Correct, sorry.
Committee report, it was a unanimous positive.
Okay, plain of order from Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a small correction that the first time Counselor Disorder said Plan Book C, Page 97, it is Plan Book 6. I just wanted to say that because I know it has to be read into the record properly, and I know we're all tired.
Thank you, okay, thank you so much. Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments? Oh, seeing none?
Sweet. I'm here for questions on paper streets, but you don't have to ask.
I, I was like, hmm, I'm going to learn something, like, oh, okay, I'll learn how we're going to vote. All right, loud and bold, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Did anybody hear him?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray? I saw your mouth move, yes, thank you. The President wished to vote.
Yes and yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, motion passes.
Counselor Gwynn, do your thing.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, pursuant to Charter Section 2-10, affirms the following appointment by the mayor of the Greenfield, by the mayor to the Greenfield Cultural District Committee, Gretchen Green, for a term to expire upon completion of project.
Second.
Second, Mayo.
I will also ask Vice President Gilmore, if there was a recommendation made on this appointment. I know you were discussing the completion of project. I think it was brought up by Counselor Elmer.
Yeah, so as long as I can determine the difference between August and September, unanimous positive recommendation.
Okay, any questions or comments? So, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Thank you. Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, any presentation of petitions and similar papers? Reporter committees, do any of the committees have anything?
President Ricketts, I'd like to speak.
You may.
From A and O. First, I mentioned it briefly. I would like to thank Vice President Gilmore for stepping in and chairing A and O. I had an unforeseen reason I could not get to the meeting, and I appreciate that committee. It's a lot of work, and she stepped up and took care of the meeting, and I appreciate it greatly. Second of all, this is a process that is going to take time. It's taking a lot of due diligence. If any counselor has anything they want to review with me or talk to me about prior to A and O, during the A and O, I would much appreciate some advanced notice so I can do my homework and have your answer there instead of leveling it at the meeting, where then it kind of disrails things, and then I'm trying to get the meeting back on so we can move forward. So if anybody has any information they're lacking for any of these recommendations from Charter Review or from opinion, please, I'd be happy to take a look at those prior to the meeting so we can move forward at those meetings and get as much done at each A and O meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I just want to say in that same vein that I have been attending the A and O in Ways and Means, we, blah, 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 yeah. I have been attending the EDC and the Ways and Means meetings lately. They've been great meetings, great speakers have been there, learned a lot about the city in the last month or two. So I just want to say it's been really great to hear all this information because these council meetings are once a month, but sometimes some of that real meat and potatoes and what's going on in the cities happening at the committee level. So I just want to thank everybody involved for all that information. Okay, so any unfinished business? Any old business? New business? Counselor Forgie, you have a first reading. Thank you. Order Number Fiscal Year 22-020, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, in order to appropriate $200,000 from OPEB stabilization, ordered that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from Fund 8406,
sum of $200,000 be transferred from Fund 8406, OPEB stabilization, to the OPEB Trust. Two-thirds vote required. The balance of stabilization in the OPEB fund is $251,373.88, and there is attached supporting rationale.
Thank you so much. Any motions for reconsideration?
Kathy Scott, here you go.
Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Sorry.
It's okay, no.
There, there's an additional second reading. It is on page 48 of the packet. Finished for $41,000.
Are correct, yes.
Order number fiscal year 22-019, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, and order Wisdom Way Engineering and Construction Administration, move that it be ordered, the sum of $41,100 be appropriated for Wisdom Way Engineering and Construction Administrative Services, and to meet said appropriations, transfer $41,100 from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization, two-thirds vote required.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Madam President, Madam President.
Hold on, Counselor Forgji.
Under new business, I would like, I would think it would be a very nice gesture for this council to put in memoriam page to honor our, the people who died on 9/11 and mark the 20th anniversary of this event.
Second, Gilmore.
Yes, thank you so much. I would like to say that I attended the September 11th event at the Greenfield Fire Station, and Leap, and Jennifer Hoffman, our director, and our mayor, all spoke. It was very emotional, it was very moving, and it was pretty well-attended, so thank you so much for bringing that up.
Can I say something?
Um, yes.
I'm just reminded that, that I, I was in Brooklyn, I saw the towers burning, I got on the subway to go to work and spent two hours in the subway underneath the World Trade Center for part of the time. Got out, someone told me that the second, that the two towers had fallen, I couldn't believe it. Spent the rest of the day trying to figure out what I could possibly do journalistically to move it forward. Tried to give blood, the line was too long, ended up walking home from Manhattan. It, it was an amazing day, a horrible day, and it's just hard to wrap my head around it, and I, I thank you for that motion.
Yes, absolutely. Any other counselor?
President Ricketts?
Yes.
There is a motion on the floor. I'm guessing once again that it can be approved without objection. If anyone has an objection, please say so.
Oh, a motion to put the?
No, um, yes, a motion, there was a motion and a second, take, put the page for 9/11 and the 20th anniversary in the minute.
Sure, all right. Do we do it without a roll call vote? Could I just?
We can, we can go without objection. Counselor Forgji has her hand up.
Oh, no, my hand's up to say yes.
Yep. All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Okay. One more.
And I did not catch who made the motion to adjourn or seconded.
Do it again, it's so exciting. Okay. Counselor Elmer, Counselor Mayo? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose and be careful. Abstain.